Everyone, to the September 5th meeting of the Carver Board of Selectment. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. Also, there are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectment page on our website for a listing and an application. All right, let's start off with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for doing the prayer, Mr. Rooney. Okay, Mr. Rooney will be doing the prayer.
Alrighty, thank you. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community enhances us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of the life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders always in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
All right. Now, this is a time that we have citizens' participation for any Carver residents that wish to address the board. We have it for five minutes, and we ask if you do talk, if you can keep it to three, so other people can go ahead and address the board. So is there anybody that's not on the agenda would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on. All right, we're gonna start off with a public hearing for Tolino Incorporated, Fiesta Chara, 66 Main Street, for an alcohol license. So do we have representatives here? Please come up and identify yourselves, please. Okay, I'm gonna need you to, are you gonna do speaking for the three of you, or? Okay, please speak into the microphone and identify yourself and the restaurant you're representing, please.
My name is Teresa Bracamontes, I'm representing Tolino Incorporated. From Lynn.
This is for a new restaurant at 66 Main? What type of restaurant it's gonna be?
We're applying for a new liquor license for 66 Main Street here in Carver. We're trying to open a new Mexican restaurant.
Okay, 66 Main, that's down by the dance studio?
Yeah, it's Studio number two. Yes, next door.
Is this the Mexican restaurant?
Yes.
Very excited.
Take questions from the board, Mr. Robinson, we want to start off with you.
I don't have any immediately, maybe I will in a second.
Hey, if you could go ahead and speak into the microphone, please.
I said I don't have any immediately, but I may have in a minute.
Sarah?
Welcome to Carver.
Ron?
When do you anticipating opening up?
Well, if the license is approved, we're like two months after the date. So we have enough time to, yeah, to prepare and have all the permits we need to.
Will it be eat in, in, take out, or?
Yes.
So are you, Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Can you just give us a little background about you? Like, are you coming from another location? Is this a first business?
Yes, well, this is gonna be my first participation on a restaurant. My family owns all the restaurants, one in Lynn, one in Marblehead. Edgar, he has been working for 15 years in Mexican restaurants.
I'm working Acapulco's restaurant. I work in the chef.
We use the microphone.
Could you use the microphone, please, sir?
So everyone can hear you.
Yes, I have four years in Beverly, Acapulco's, or the chef, and Acapulco's and Sagui, seven years. And cooking food, Mexican.
So a lot of experience. How about we with liquor license? We're not at a limit of any sort, correct? I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
And we have a second, further discussion.
Can I ask the seating capability inside there, inside the restaurant? Maximum capacity in there?
Yeah, 40 seating, but we're trying to ask for 50, including standing.
Okay, just the seating, is there a bar that's involved in that?
Yeah, includes the bar.
Okay, including, the 40 is including the bar?
Including the bar, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, one, just to give you a heads up, you may know already, but the number of parking spaces you need, it depends on the seating too, so that might be, have you gone through planning board?
No, for the parking spaces, but I think there's plenty of spaces.
Well, you might just wanna check with the.
Yeah, because there's other businesses there, so, yeah, I need to check with the landlord too.
One question I have is, because there is an active dance studio there, have you been in contact with them? Because I know parking can really get tight when they have changes of, you know, when one class ends and another one begins, and have you kind of talked to them about what?
Not, not yet, once we know a little bit more about the license, we will be able to talk to them and see what are the hours, their busy days, or, you know, have an arrangement and see how many parking spaces, parking spaces we can have and.
Okay, you're using the liquor license as your first step?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes.
If you were not granted the liquor license, would that impact whether you would even have the restaurant or not?
Yes, because, like I said, that there's 60% of the earnings, it's from the alcohol. And probably 40% on food, takeout and.
But as for guidance, Sarah's absolutely right, you might wanna contact the planning board sooner than later, because they will really be able to guide you in terms of anything from the town perspective that will be helpful to you, so.
Yeah, you don't wanna get in there and then come to find you don't have enough parking, for example.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So they're downstairs, and I'm sure this office can give you that contact information.
So, yes, thank you. So the amount of parking spaces that we have will depend on the town, or depending on the landlord and whether there is rent in there?
It depends on the town, that, the number of seats determines your number of parking spaces, and there may already be a maximum number of spaces there, so that may in turn affect the number of seats. I don't know, I'm not saying there's a problem, I just don't want you to run into one, that's all. Just trying to be helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Malinowski, what are the boards that they're gonna have to go through for permits and whatnot?
They'll still have to go to the Board of Health and the Fire Department, they'll have to go through, and then they will need to check in just with the Planning Department. But this is the first step to get the liquor license, because then that allows them to run their economics to determine whether or not they can succeed in their business, so this is usually the first stop.
I see the chief is here, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but on initial gut reaction, would another establishment having a liquor license be a problem for the Police Department, or? Okay, thank you.
So are you, Mr. Chair, could I make an amendment to the motion? I think we should like make it contingent on to make sure that they seek advice from the Planning Board and the Fire Department, or should we just grant the license?
I personally would think it would be alright just.
I think they have to do that anyway.
Yeah, because, yeah, I don't think we need to put that stipulation on the liquor license, because they're gonna be required to do all that anyway. They have multiple stops, and we just assume that that's what they'll do.
Just as long as you're aware of what your multiple stops are.
Yeah, we just don't want you to be blind, so.
Uh, Shu Devi, here in this department, she gave me a list of the departments we have to go through.
Good, excellent, okay.
Wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Nope.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the liquor license for this establishment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous 5-0. Congratulations on your first step, and look forward to being able to have another good restaurant in town.
Exactly, yeah, good job.
Just reach out to Elaine tomorrow, and she'll help you out with stuff. Reach out to Elaine tomorrow, and she'll help you out with.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, poll hearing for Verizon at 85 Main Street. If you could identify yourself, please, sir, and speak into the microphone.
My name's Barry Maffini, I work for a company called UCS who does right-of-way work for Verizon. If I might just throw out a, a, not a correction necessarily, but, but this is unusual in that we're treating this as a public hearing, only in that the polls in question, or the poll in question is in fact on-town property. It's not in the public way, which is where we typically seek grants of location through a public hearing, but by state law, that has to happen. But in this case, it's like, it's like dealing with any other property owner. The town happens to be the property owner in this case. So we would typically attempt to secure an easement, and we will do that. But in the meantime, in order to keep the project moving, because an easement through a town gets, the process is lengthy, it has to go through town meeting, I believe. So what's before you tonight is a license in order to accommodate that poll and the rights of the utility companies to place it, maintain it, and keep things moving along in the process of, you know, the construction process.
This is the elementary school.
Right, right. So, that having been said, I would be happy to entertain any questions the board might have, or.
As a part of, if I could just feed on that, as part of the construction project and built into all the plans, we had to move certain poles to make room for the new driveways coming in and where the new building's gonna go. So this is something that's always been in the plans, this is just a procedural issue that we have to go through to grant them a license for the pole. But we have to hold a public hearing because of it, so that's why we're taking up your time this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Hey, further discussion, Ms. Hewens.
So is this a real public hearing, or just part of a public meeting?
It's a public hearing.
So the butters have been notified?
Yes.
Anybody else? Seems like this is something we just have to approve because it's part of the school, new school project.
Yes, procedurally, yes, the Board of Selectmen have to approve this.
Everybody needs it, everybody wants it, we wanna get it done.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve this license. Does anybody, good point, thank you. Anybody wanna speak on this? Once, twice, hearing none. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, donation of three parcels of land by Clark Griffith, as requested by the Conservation Commission. If I could, I'd have the table moved to you guys.
Okay, well, three parcels of land is a mystery to me, because it's two parcels.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Suzanne Lyons, I'm the trustee of Griffith Compound Realty Trust, and this is Clark Griffith, the trustee of.
Yeah, Clark Griffith, I've been around here a little while.
So we have conservation land that is 10.9 acres that is held in the Wildlands Conservation Trust, and we would like to donate it to the town, it's located along Route 58, two separate parcels. And we sent a deed and our trustee's certificate.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
So I thought that these two parcels had a conservation restriction on them with Wildlands Trust?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I said.
That's what I thought you said. I knew that from before. And so they're in the loop with this?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
They think it's a great donation.
So that's MAP 93 parcel 4B and 3B?
Yes.
I see the other parcel was whited out.
Let me see. Do you have the deed there in front of you? Yes, 2.7, it's lot, I think this is 93, 4A, and 90.
We have MAP 93 lot 4B and MAP 93 lot 3B.
That's what we're showing here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
2.75 and 8.15 acres.
Correct.
And the Conservation Commission has already opined on this, and again, this is their request for the selectmen to accept. This generous offer.
Thank you, Michael.
Could I have a motion?
So move to accept this donation.
Second.
Okay, motion made in the second to accept the donation, further discussion or questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clark. Thank you. Would you like a copy of the Wildlands Trust conservation restriction? And would you like the engineering plans for the two parcels? Yes, yes and yes. Great.
All right, we have a motion made in second to accept these two generous donations from Clark Griffith. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 5-0, thank you very much, Clark.
Thank you.
It is really appreciated.
Thank you.
You've done so much for the town, and. We didn't have to put it that way, Clark.
You're supposed to make it a sacrifice.
And there's more, more on its way, we're just having our forest plan completed on it, with there's another 32 acres that abut, both parcels abut town conservation, so that'll be a nice contribution.
Super, thank you very much. All right, we now move on to the Town Administrator's Update. And John ran out. Oh, no, there's John.
Yes, Mr. Woods, I believe you have a presentation for this evening?
And we all have copies of this at our desks. Good evening, I know that everybody wants to hear me speak, especially Michael, but I'm gonna turn it over to Gabrielle and Jenny, they're from Ty and Bond, and they're the company that is helping us with our stormwater management program.
Could you give us their full names, please, John?
Thank you.
So the people at home will know.
Gabrielle, I'm not exactly sure how to pronounce your last name, Elfit, and Jenny Moonen.
Can we speak from here, so we don't have?
As long as you hold it like this, so people can hear.
You, that, that has a little bit of play with it, so you can lift it up?
Yeah.
Oh.
He always said a little bit.
How's this, is this, is this?
Tell you what, if she can run the computer, you can sit it, come around behind, sit in that chair.
That, that one will reach.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had all the logistics worked out. Anyway, that's, that's a little bit better.
Did John plan this, so we didn't have?
But you're still, yeah.
That's, that's a little bit better.
You're still gonna have to hold it up.
I apologize having my back to you.
Gabrielle, you're still gonna have to hold it.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna do a very quick presentation tonight in respect to your wishes to move on to your next item, but we wanna give you an update, so that you understand the current status of federal and state stormwater regulations, and give you a quick summary on what Carver has done to build the current stormwater management program, and discuss with the board the next steps and funding projections for keeping on track with the regulations. So, next, could you, next slide? So, big picture, we want to provide you with answers for these questions. Why is stormwater being regulated? Who's doing the regulating? What does this mean for Carver? What are the deadlines to comply? And importantly, what's this gonna cost?
So just bigger picture, I mean, EPA nationally regulates stormwater runoff from construction industry and MS4s, which I'll define in another slide, including large and medium municipalities, so like Boston and Worcester, small municipalities with urbanized areas designated by the US Census, and quasi municipal facilities, so like MS DOT. So this map, excuse me, this map shows Carver's urbanized regulated area by EPA. So the outline of the town is in the black, and then those hatched kind of pink areas are the urbanized area defined by the US Census. So this is not the whole town that's regulated by EPA, it's just kind of the northern portion and that small developed area down south. EPA is regulating the discharges of stormwater from the municipal separate storm sewer system, so that's what the MS4 is, and that is the conveyance or system of conveyances, including roads with drainage systems, municipal streets, catch basins, curbs, gutters, ditches, et cetera, et cetera, that are municipally owned and operated. And this also includes country drainage, so, you know, unlike more urbanized areas that have a lot of catch basins and piping and an outfall that goes to a water body, Carver has a lot of places where there's curb cuts in the roadway that go into swales. That's still part of the MS4. EPA is regulating these discharges through what we call a general permit process, so just, this kind of goes back to the Clean Water Act, but in Massachusetts, in 2003, the US Environmental Protection Agency and MS DEP issued what's called a general permit, and that applies to all communities that are regulated under this program. And it means that all the requirements are the same for everyone, and how you comply with them is kind of up to you to tailor to your town. That permit expired in 2008, because NIPD's permits are only eligible to be, excuse me, they're only five-year permits. EPA took its time and has finally issued a new permit that should have been effective July 1st this year, because we had a change in the administration, some communities directly wrote to Scott Pruitt and had, Region 1 was required to delay the effective date of that permit until July 1st, 2018. So there's another year of time before anything's really required to be started. This program, the general permit, has requirements under six minimum control measures. I'm not gonna read them to you, there's a handout in your packet if you're interested in more details, but communities all have to do the same six minimum control measures and address impaired water quality issues.
So Carver brought Ty and Bonds on board in 2016, and our mission was to bring Carver up to date with 2003 permit requirements, there were some areas of some deficiencies, and then to help Carver navigate the new permit process going forward. So 2017, FY 2017, our goal is really evaluate and plan. We completed a stormwater audit of the 2003 permit, and we identified some areas with some deficiencies. For example, the annual reporting was behind by three years, that was kind of a bad thing. And on the other hand, there was stormwater outfall mapping that we, in our opinion, we thought was maybe overzealous, and possibly was including outfalls that didn't truly meet the EPA definition. So we also did a stormwater action plan, looking forward to the new permit to give a five-year planning budget, and Jenny is gonna discuss that in just a minute as the wrap-up to our presentation. So we expanded on the evaluation work to basically target the high-priority tasks, which we consider to be work that was overdue from 2003. And also to help the town kind of look forward to reducing costs going forward. This had to do with stormwater field work, looking at mostly those road cut areas, and in our initial field evaluation, about, was that about two-thirds or half? About half of the sites we looked at, in fact, were not outfalls. So we were able to reduce by? Eighty? About 80 outfalls, you know, right at the, within two days of mapping. And ideally, we'll continue this work to continue to reduce the number of outfalls that are mapped in the town of Carver, and this relates to testing that will be required going forward. It's gonna save the town a lot of money. We stayed on top of paperwork, we provided training on best management practices to avoid stormwater pollution during everyday practices of municipal, excuse me, municipal operations focusing on the DPW. And in FY 18, our focus is going to be on completing the paperwork necessary for the new permit. This includes a notice of intent, which we're currently working on now. We have a draft ready to go to John, and then, it's, I'm sorry.
It's like, it's like the application for coverage under the new permit.
Sorry. And the written stormwater management plan, which is the backup to the notice of intent. It basically writes out and it prescribes each action that the town will take to meet the new permit requirements. We'll be meeting with the Stormwater Management Task Force this fall, and that's very important to get buy-in, because these new permit requirements may change the way that a different department is doing business. The good news is that a lot of the work that's been done already will just be able to slightly tweak, though there will be some new additional tasks that various departments from Conservation, Planning Board, and DPW, possibly Board of Health, will need to be adding to their load, unfortunately. So we will be coming back to you in the spring of 2018 with a notice of intent completed, the stormwater management plan completed, and then we'll be ready to go for the submittal after this stay of the permit.
So we just wanted to wrap up with probably the most interesting part to you guys. So as part of the work we did in fiscal year 2017, we prepared what's called, we call an action plan, but you should have gotten copies of this in your packets. It's a letter report, it has the table attached to it. We summarized the 300 pages of permit requirements into about six, and, yeah, trust me, you don't wanna read that thing. And we, you know, we come up with budgetary opinions of cost for each of the permit requirements based on our, you know, our experience, our professional judgment. So this summarizes kind of annually what we expect those costs for complete bare minimum compliance. This is doing nothing above and beyond what is required. But these costs can vary, this is assuming contractors would be doing the work, so they would be decreased if town staff do some or all of the labor. There's also some free resources that'll be available that I'll mention at the end of this. But this table that you have has a number of columns, but basically it's explaining the permit requirement, our assumptions about the cost, and then an annual cost estimate. So these costs also don't include any of the operation and maintenance of street sweeping, catch basin cleaning that's already going on. And they also include in permit year five, that $59,000, a placeholder for constructing what's called the stormwater best management practice, so a structural solution that treats stormwater runoff to comply with those water quality issues. And so that's something that, that cost could vary, it could be, if it was done sooner, it could be funded by grant monies possibly, so that's something to be thinking about.
And just, just jumping in, that project is going to have to be in the area that drains to Crane Brook Pond, where there's a phosphorus issue. So even though the requirement to get this treatment system, it's basically a demonstration project, so it's one project that has to be built in planning year five. Thinking about it now, thinking about it ahead of time, is a really good idea for the town. There's a number of different grant programs that are out there. There's a number of different grant programs that are out there, and if you know eventually we're going to need to be putting in a stormwater treatment system to remove nutrients, you've got, you know, it's good to think about it before year five, so.
Quick question on the nutrients, are those coming from stormwater runoff, or are those coming from the bogs?
So, those are coming, EPA's saying that those are coming from stormwater runoff. There's what's called a total maximum daily load, it's a pollution budget for a water body, it's developed by the state, and it specifies how much quote-unquote pollution can go to water bodies and where it's coming from. And so, EPA has put requirements in this new permit to try and reduce phosphorus and nitrogen in stormwater runoff through practices that are a little bit less structural, so like, what are some of them? So, educating the public on fertilizer use, I'm trying to think, you know, doing good housekeeping the way John's doing it, and municipal, you know, municipal good housekeeping, picking up pet waste.
Is the EPA reaching out to the growers?
It's phosphorus, though, Alan, it's not nitrogen she's talking about.
Well, so, there's ni, the nitrogen issue is actually with the Buzzards Bay piece, and then there's phosphorus with...
Yeah, the only one water, the only one water body in Carver that has a phosphorus impairment is...
So, where would the phosphorus be coming from?
The phosphorus is likely coming from fertilizers.
From what?
Fertilizers.
And also people's fertilizing their lawns.
It actually, it's organically created, even leaf decomposition causes phosphorus, so when it gets into a catch basin, unfortunately, it's natural sources. And EPA unfortunately is not reaching out to community, to specific industries and whatnot, they're sort of expecting in this new permit that communities will take on that burden. You know, I don't, um, so, I guess, just to wrap up, we're done here, just, there are gonna be free resources coming out, the state has taken on the onus of developing some public education materials and templates along with the Regional Stormwater Coalition, so that will lower those costs that we presented. And another thing that will lower those costs is, as Gabrielle had mentioned before, is reducing the number of mapped outfalls drives a lot of the cost to collect samples, to look at pollution problems, so the less outfalls you have, the lower the cost is. So, we're working, we'd like to work towards that in fiscal year 18. And there's a number of funding options for stormwater communities, or doing all sorts of different things, from keeping it with the general fund, getting grants, to all the way going to a stormwater utility, so.
It's, Carver's really at the low end of the budget overall for a stormwater management program. So, you know, Jenny and I are discussing this, you know, our feeling is that hopefully you, you can address these tasks through the general funds, and you know, you won't need to go to an outside source, connection fees, other types of taxes, or a stormwater utility probably wouldn't make sense for a community this size. But those options are out there, should you want to be looking for another source to fund this program. So, that's really all that we had, happy to answer any other questions.
You mentioned Crane Brook Pond?
Yep.
Where is, I mean, I know Crane Brook Reservoir, it's on the up, up, it's on the upside of Crane Brook Bog itself, is that what you're referring to is Crane Brook Pond?
Yeah, nobody, I think what they're, this is down South Tremont Street, right, yeah, nobody calls it that, it's, it's basically a bog reservoir.
Yeah. It's not the one behind the restaurant?
No, it has nothing to do with the Crane Brook, it's a different water.
No, I'm talking about the Crane Brook Boggs.
Crane Brook Bog Pond.
Could I see that map for just a second, please, ma'am?
Yeah, this is a terrible map.
It's just before the Wareham Town Line on the left.
It's not on either of these maps, let me see if I have another. I have something that hasn't on it, it just doesn't have, that's a terrible map, couldn't look at it.
Okay, having spent my youth on Crane Brook Boggs.
Crane Brook Bog Pond.
Okay, so, it's either this, because there's federal, and then that's one water spot. Okay, all right.
Do you know what, did you pick it out?
Yep.
Crane Brook Bog Pond, I mean, number 95.
Which is nowhere near Crane Brook.
That's an EPA name.
EPA, the names that often are on these maps aren't what locally is used oftentimes, so sorry.
We'll fix that, we'll fix that in the plan.
Mr. Clark?
Is this stormwater management, is this more concerned with the pollution caused by stormwater runoff as opposed to the ability to keep the roads clear in case of rain? This is, this is more to do with pollution than it is with...
You're absolutely correct, this is taking it from, yeah, it's focused on pollution of the, waters of the US, going back to the Clean Water Act.
Mr. Malowski, have we had a budget for this in the past? I, I mean, I see the numbers that they're anticipating going forward, and I guess I'd also ask John if he has any idea to what extent we might be doing some of the work which might mitigate some of the costs.
Yeah, we're budgeted for $25,000 a year on that, and Gabrielle and Jenny have been just using what we have to pick away, like they said, bare minimums, just to get us back to where we need to be with our permit. But in the future, like they said, we probably are gonna be asking for more funding for that. Yes, yep. Well, Gabrielle said the things that she went over, could you get those back up there, Jenny, what we've already done?
Great.
In the field, we haven't done anything in the field, could you explain what they've done in the field? The DPW themselves haven't done anything.
Yeah, this, this would be a really good idea to, to describe this, because I think this is very easily something that, that you could do, that volunteers could assist you with, and actually, the fall and the winter is ideal times to do it.
So, Jenny, why don't you explain that? So, we had our staff go out for two days, and they looked, there's a map that was developed previously of all the, the catch basins and the locations of stormwater outfalls. Some of those are pipes, as you would imagine an outfall would be, and some of those are curb cuts. And we went to a lot of locations with curb cuts and looked at whether there truly was a defined channel that would carry the water from the roadway into a water of the US. And in a lot of places where there were curb cuts mapped, the road just sort of sheet flowed off, that's not an outfall under EPA's definition in the MS4. So, we said that those were not stormwater outfalls. So, what we're doing is we're walking around in the field with an existing map, taking photos of each location and taking notes on what we saw. And we had staff out there that can make the determination whether or not it's an outfall, but staff certainly could go out, volunteers, your staff could go out and do the inventory and show us the photos, it's pretty easy to see when you have a swale or not.
You mentioned in your presentation, the existing map that you had was a little overzealous.
Yeah, right.
Is that what you're talking about?
Right, yes.
Because if things are marked down that, that may, that maybe shouldn't be, that's gonna require a lot more mitigation on things that we don't necessarily need to do the mitigation on.
Correct, yeah, so that, that seems to be like the first order of business, is to get those number of outfalls reduced. Fewer outfalls you have, fewer dollars you have to spend.
So, I, I can actually speak to that as the former conservation agent, we had the Buzzards Bay National Estuary Program.
Yep.
Gave us a grant, and we hired someone to do that. So, I think they were being extra, extra careful.
They were.
And then we actually put it on the, the actual map, but...
Nice to know who did the work.
There you go.
And back in 2003, you know, that permit that EPA had then, it wasn't as prescriptive and onerous, so it, there was no impetus to not map locations that were suspected outfalls. But now, the, the new permit's very specific and prescriptive, and it wants samples to be collected from all those locations under certain scenarios, and that, as you imagine, can get costly.
Well, and that, that's good, actually, because the sheet flow wouldn't, in that case, probably be an outfall.
Correct, sheet flow wouldn't be an outfall.
It has to, it has to both, you know, be flowing off the road, and has to get, reasonably get to a water of the US. So, if it's, if it's discharging, it's going into a catch basin, discharging to the ground, that doesn't count. If it just disperses onto a field, that doesn't count.
Right.
If it's directly discharging, you know, paved, going into a water body, that counts.
So, under our current regulations, there's obviously some obligations the towns have. But as you said, the 2017 of July of this year was postponed by a year. Do we anticipate there's gonna be other postponements coming up in the next three years that's going to adjust our five-year budget process?
Sure, so, the permit is under appeal in the appellate court, there's five appeals total, some are from larger municipalities in Mass, some are from nonprofits like, excuse me, Conservation Law Foundation, that want it to be more stringent, so there's appeals that want it to be less stringent. We're hearing that those are gonna be worked out sometime next spring, so this one-year delay should allow enough time for the permit, whatever sections are gonna get struck in to be gone before the permit becomes effective. Who knows what can happen, right? I mean, we don't know completely what the administration could do and what those appeals will result in, but...
Isn't it, weren't you thinking that Charles River watershed and some of the larger water quality requirements would likely be...
So, the pieces that are very expensive, that $50,000 to construct a stormwater BNP, based on discussions with EPA staff, because I actually used to work at EPA Region 1 writing NIPD's permits, so they have said that it's possible that the permit requirements related to water quality may get less stringent, less costly, we don't know.
But it could be more stringent and more costly.
We've been as conservative as possible with our estimates to have it be a bare minimum scenario, but it's full compliance is what we're estimating your budgets for. After the five-year mark, their expectation is you would continue to install stormwater BMPs on some schedule, so plan for them and then construct them, but it depends what a community wants to do.
And this five-year budget is a very reasonable budget compared to what other municipalities have to deal with, and you know, I've been hearing about the stormwater, you know, process coming up, and there was gonna be these hard deadlines, and we're gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. Well, as you can see, those deadlines are getting delayed, but there is gonna be a cost going forward, and, and these are relatively reasonable numbers compared to, again, what many other municipalities are doing. Still, the first four years don't bother me that much, but that fifth year, and that that's a conservative estimate, that, that, that has me concerned that we'll be able, because that one, you know, I get a little, I, I see the reason for it, but when the EPA's coming up with these ideas and these wonderful things they want us to do, but then they rely on the towns to pay for them, when you're talking about a town like Carver with very limited resources, I'm sorry, I'm concerned.
Well, there are grant opportunities out there as well, Alan.
Hopefully, and hopefully we'll get some, but still...
So, a lot of why we wanted to come tonight was to talk about these concerns, and the one thing I'll say about constructing a stormwater structure, great ways to, thinking about that when you're doing other projects, like it sounds like the school's under construction, or maybe there'll be some roadway work that John's doing it some year, those are places to look for a chance to put in this demonstration BMP, so if there was work to a park or a parking lot, so this gives you time to think about it, and maybe a project will come up that's another capital priority that you could fit this into somehow.
That fifth-year budget included money for this project. So, we could, we get a grant, identify a site in the next year or so, apply for a grant to construct it, that budget, that number drops way down. So, that's why we're, you know, we're thinking, it's like, let's think ahead to what some of the bigger ticket items are, and also, every year, you know, you can prioritize what, what's the most pressing thing to do, and kind of roll over a little bit from year to year. So, there's, there's quite a bit of leeway in, in how you handle the budget.
Which department would take the lead on that? Would it be John's, or would it be in conjunction with Lake Concon, Conservation Commission?
Well, most of this stuff is infrastructure improvements, so the Conservation Commission will always be involved with anything relating to water bodies, wetlands, et cetera, but a lot of what's being discussed here are infrastructure projects that would have to be done. And since John's department with Dave Seigantoff, that does all of the storm runoff, you know, that's where it's, it's appropriately located.
I think it's very appropriate, and I really thank the ladies who are here, the tables are so, we can start thinking along those lines, because better to know about it now than be surprised four years down the road by it, so. Mr. Clark?
Just a question, the, the five-year planning budget, did, is that above and beyond the $25,000 a year that we're already spending, or would, would that be drawn out of that $25,000 that we're already spending?
It would be drawn out of it.
Okay, so when I see $32,000 in the second year, that's actually only an increase of $7,000 over what we're already spending.
That's correct.
Additional, additional to the budget, okay. Thank you.
And we are talking about our groundwater.
Yeah, I know.
Let's not forget.
Mr. Robison, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Any other questions?
We don't need to take any action, this is just an update, correct?
This is an update.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ladies, thank you very much, I appreciate your time and the great information you're able to provide.
We'll see you in the spring.
Thank you.
Now, the, is that gonna have to be a public hearing in the spring, because I noticed it said public hearing? So, is that gonna be a public hearing run by us, the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it could be through, the public hearing could be run by John, actually, John did.
Okay, I like that idea.
Figured you would.
All right. Moving on with the Town Administrator's Update. Yes, if I could have Mr. Mahoney come up? And Scott, I don't know if you wanna come up, your call. So, I'm gonna just do a very brief introduction, is Stephen Mahoney was hired by Scott Neef, the superintendent, and myself, earlier this summer, to be the first townwide IT director, director of, when we end up finalizing the title, I don't know what around a few times, Chief Information Office?
Chief Technology Officer.
Chief Technology Officer.
I like it.
And under Stephen's job description, he is to oversee all of the IT on both the town and the school side. With him, he has two full-time employees, so there's now a total staff of three people being able to, to run the town. And with that, we've already been going over many initiatives. One is with the new school coming online, it's gonna be the first or the second building that's actually built with an IT room built in, that's already, you know, properly cooled and, and humidified or dehumidified. So, you know, one of our long-term objectives is to relocate all of the, the network hub, if you will, out of the school once that that's up and running. That's gonna take some investment, that we believe we have the funding available within the school project. As well as upgrading some of the computer servers and infrastructure in the town, that will actually get into some of the additional wiring that needs to happen into our town so we can have more state-of-the-art and high-speed internet capacity with the appropriate backup data. And then finally is with the new elementary school coming online and the fire station, working with the Cable Advisory Committee with Mr. Clark to, you know, make sure that we can get the appropriate fiber at those buildings. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Stephen and have him give you kind of an overview in more detail what he's been doing, and kind of give you a little look ahead as what's gonna happen in the town too. Stephen?
Thank you, Michael. It's great to be back and with the board again. So, it's been a very busy summer, we've been working with the town and the school department. The main focus that we've had over the last couple of weeks has been to meet with various departments and assess where the technology needs and deficiencies are in the town. So, we've met with police, fire, you know, we're continuing to go throughout the town and meet with the individual department heads and see what their concerns are, what has not been addressed in the past. So, we continue to schedule those meetings, and in the background, what we've been trying to do is actually take a list of, you know, what has to be done. So, we've met with a consultant that has actually worked with the town in the past. He can kind of give us some insight as to what he's been doing for the town and the various departments. And we're actually working on kind of developing a plan that's gonna address some of these deficiencies, particularly in Town Hall, but in the other departments as well. So, the main focus of that is going to be upgrading this system and consolidating. So, we currently have essentially a loop that connects the school and the town networks, but it's all, you know, basically separated. So, what we want to do is combine those systems into one, so we can manage them as one department, and you know, that would essentially lead to a more efficient system, a better backup system, and a lot happier staff throughout Town Hall. So, we've started our work on consolidating systems. Um so we've started our work on consolidating systems. Um we've also been looking into uh consolidating our telephone system in conjunction with the new elementary school. Um and as Michael was saying there, uh we currently have our main uh equipment housed in the middle high school, so uh some of the equipment there is older, we're looking into moving that to the new elementary building, because it's a properly designed room, has great cooling, uh have new lines as well. In addition, uh we've worked with the various departments and I really appreciate everybody's cooperation on this. Uh we've been taking inventory of all the equipment that lies throughout the different departments, uh combining that into a large list, so we have an idea of what equipment the town actually owns, uh where it is and how we can support that. Uh next up, we have created a IT help desk, so any support requests have been set up to a specific email address. And when we get a request from a staff member in town, it gets sent to the entire technology department. Uh from there, we kind of disperse and whoever is uh quickest able to respond to that will do so. Yep, absolutely, so in addition to that, uh the biggest focus for us um has been with this new elementary school. So I'm actually excited this week, um we are working on getting some of the technology from different vendors out to the elementary building. Um we've been working with the consultants for the new elementary project uh and the teaching staff as well to kind of get input on what we want to do for technology in that new building. Uh that goes down to classroom level, you know, as well as network level. So we have some vendors coming out to give us demonstrations, we're gonna get some feedback from teachers on what they actually like. Uh that's gonna be coming up this week or next week. Uh and this is all in addition to a very busy, typical summer workflow, so I just wanna throw my thanks out to uh Brian and Candy, it's been a very busy summer, um but everybody has done a great job. And so far, we've really enjoyed working with everybody in the town and we're looking forward to continuing that.
How many um Chromebooks have you rolled out this year?
Yeah, in addition, we've also rolled out, uh it was about four hundred and fifty Chromebooks. So that's additional devices for the students in the middle high school.
Nice.
So that's on top of all that as well.
Those were paid for out of our capital funds. Um a- as we briefly mentioned with the elementary school, when the elementary school was designed, you know, we had it designed as a certain you know, requirement that it would just be one of the buildings tied into our whole town. We are going to have to use a little bit of our contingency money to upgrade that a little bit more, so that we can then move everything into the town, which is actually gonna make us uh have more reliability, better safer, you know, storage area for everything. Uh but that can all still be done, you know, well within, you know, some of the contingency we have on that. But that's really the the right move for the town is to to centralize all that in the proper facility. Give you an example, in Town Hall, where we have our servers operating. In the summer, that room may get up into the ninety degrees and literally you can watch the mouse, you know, flicker as you're going across the screen, just because it slows down all the data processing. These are some of the things that hopefully would be addressed by that, as well as some other network improvements.
I'll just a quick question before I open it up to the board. Would that be, you know, moving everything centralized to the new elementary school? Will the school be ready enough for us to do that during the summer, so everything will be done prior to the next school year?
It would, yeah, and we'll have redundancy, so that our systems will continue to function as we transition equipment over. Um so we we've already kind of built that redundancy into the existing school network, so some of the town resources will actually be shifted over to the school buildings while we complete uh the transition.
Questions from the board? Mr. Clark?
Uh yeah, a couple of things, I left you a message today, Stephen.
Yes, yeah, I just got that, yeah, we, absolutely, so Comcast is something we continue to work on.
Uh but a- also, the executive director of the cable studio knows where a lot of the bodies are buried in some of this stuff, so I think it'd be good to get you to get together and have a conversation.
Could you expound upon so everybody, people watching?
Well, right now, the the head end for that that is is in the, located in the high school and so that and it causes problems for the cable studio, trying to run cable and Comcast is just very uh belligerent and difficult to work with, so Stephen's been in touch with Comcast, trying to get things set up uh over here at the uh new elementary school. And we were talking about upgrading the uh fire station, so they could go live from there. And Comcast is saying, well, you know, the deal you had before isn't the deal that you have anymore, so that you know, then we're gonna have to start charging you fifteen thousand dollars a year to give you basically what you've been getting for nothing.
Sounds like it's time for a new deal.
Well, the Comcast, the Comcast, it it it's perfect timing, because the contract's up in two years, we're just about ready to get going again, so this gives us a good little bit of leverage as we talk to them that uh to get that set up. And and Scott, I might mention that ten years ago or eight years ago, when we did the last contract, we did have the technical representative from the school as part of our committee, if you could consider loaning us Stephen for some of those hearings when the time comes. Uh he didn't hesitate, by the way, Stephen, in volunteering, just just so you know.
Having to help out where I can with that.
So that uh and then um yeah, so that I think it's important that we get together and find out what it is that they're saying now, have some conversations and then incorporate that as we move forward with trying to hammer out a new plan. Unfortunately, Verizon still isn't interested in coming into town, so Comcast is the only um game in town. But we nevertheless still have leverage, and they're looking for a new ten-year agreement, so uh we'll, we're in contact, our our attorneys with Coleman and Page will probably be representing us this time around, so uh as we lay the groundwork, I'll have everyone in a loop uh as we move forward and try to get that taken care of. But this is a golden opportunity with the construction of the new elementary school to try to do all this now. So we need to get some of those solutions before we get into the contract, we we, you know, we can't wait around to get the contract done.
Yeah, exactly, so our focus right now is to figure out what can we do to get that elementary school online, so that, you know, day one teachers are ready to go. Um so that's that's my main focus and Comcast has given us a lot of resistance, and that was the latest update that we just received last week.
We we may have to go ahead and agree to those terms for now and then negotiate them out after the fact, but we we can talk about that. Uh that IT request helpline that's not available to residents, that's strictly just staff, okay?
Correct, yeah.
Clear, because I'd be calling it a regular basis if it was available to uh to everyone. Okay, great.
You mentioned a couple of deficiencies you found in the Town Hall. Uh was that a backup, was it bandwidth, was it all of the above or what?
Uh so far, all of the above. So some of the wiring in this building is outdated, that needs to be replaced.
Okay.
Uh the backup system is an area of opportunity that we've started to look at. Uh and some of the uh equipment in this building, uh for example, we were running off of something called a work group. Without getting too technical, it's just an older system, uh we're looking to kind of modernize this and tie the systems in with the school building as well.
Yeah, great idea, unify everything, right?
Correct, yeah.
That was the ultimate plan. I also wanted to comment on the, uh I loved your comments about everybody's all on board and willing to help and jumping on board, so uh, you know, that was the purpose of you being hired and brought on board, and I'm glad to hear it's going well.
Absolutely.
Glad you were busy, by the way.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks, thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
While he's sitting back there, and I know he didn't want to bother us anything, but just um, I'd like, you know, Michael's very happy with the way things going with the townwide IT, and I wanna make sure that the school is still happy with on the school side. Is it going as well as you hoped it would?
Scott Neave, Superintendent of County Public Schools, uh no, the school is very happy with the arrangement right now, I think, you know, so uh we were excited to have the opportunity to hire Stephen, uh we thought he was outstanding candidate for the position, had the technical background and the skills, uh both on the technology side and also on the people's side, uh to really unify all of our systems, and so the school is very happy with the current arrangement.
And opening the school went fine from an IT standpoint?
Opening the school from the technology standpoint, actually from all standpoints went really well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad you're still with us.
Yes.
We haven't scared you off yet.
Not yet.
All right, moving on.
Yes, can we get Dave and John up here? And we could call Scott up to it anytime as well. Um so for the last couple of years, I think we've all been talking about the merger of the facilities in the DPW, and we did it internally in the town, and now we're working through that uh with the school system. Uh both with John and Dave, uh they have come up with a new title uh that they thought was more appropriate to what they're being asked to do, and that's Operations and Maintenance Department. And uh with that, they've been working hand in hand, as well as with the men and the women that work for the town doing that. And I'm gonna just turn it over to Dave and to John, if you wanna kind of just give an overview of how things are progressing.
All right, good evening.
Evening.
Hi.
Yes, as Michael said, uh the new uh operating title is Operations and Maintenance. Um so that encompasses all townwide buildings and buildings and grounds and DPW. Uh so right now, I have moved uh over my office from central administration over to Town Hall, and I can attest to Stephen saying there's deficiencies in the I cannot have a direct phone line in and I cannot scan our facts. Old copper lines in Town Hall, but he is working on that. Uh but I'm happy to be here, um so I'm over with John, so we can start to merge better and streamline our operations. On day-to-day operations, um right now, uh myself like Stephen, uh the two construction projects uh pretty much the focus of my day-to-day, right now it is kind of wrapping up the high school, middle school, uh which should be completed by the end of this month. They're actually switched to second shift this week. Um they have to, they're finishing uh windows and uh basically a punchless on the roofing. We will be signing up mechanical soon, and last week of September, first week of October, um the general contractor should be pulling out of there with the project a hundred percent complete. So far, so so good.
And actually, I'm gonna pick on Dave here a little bit to just give you a little bit more background, without having further in the agenda. Uh but that project is still on budget, uh but there was a delay as it related to some of the windows uh were being, couldn't be manufactured fast enough from the distributors that were done. So that's kind of what part of the delay is, and those windows are being replaced on the evenings and the weekends.
Yes.
And um
That, and the uh, they found, once they opened up the roofing, uh part of that building is, it's two exterior materials, it's brick and it's a metal paneling. And upon opening up the roof, they found out that due to a deficiency in the original installation, architectural engineering, um there was actually water getting in behind the metal paneling, um and that was getting under the roof, so even with a new roof, uh we still could have potentially had roof leaks. Uh so they devised a uh sheet metal interlocking system uh to divert the water, to get it up on top of the roof. Uh there was no guarantees, but we did a water test on it and it seems to work. Um so that was an additional, so we've had a few uh unseens there, but I've been happy with the general contractor and all the subs and uh they've worked to uh come up with a plan and keep it uh on time and and on budget as much as possible. Uh so things are going good over there. Uh elementary school is is on time, everything is is going as planned over there. Um so that is good. Um daily, I typically have to answer some some questions or inquiries, um and that keeps things, keeps rolling. Um so outside of that, I'm starting to uh work with John and him and I are learning each other's uh daily responsibilities. We're trying to ease into this, although most days I feel like we've jumped into the deep end right away. But i- it's going good. Uh so on example, we're on that email about the bandstand across the street. Um John and I looked at that today for the roof, uh so we're gonna come up with a plan for that. Um so we're we're working together, I'm starting to get into the town buildings, John showing me around, so learning what we have there. Uh day-to-day, short term, I have a uh a list I'm starting to formulate for uh hot list, uh short list and a long list, so we're working on today's problems, next month's problems and thirty years' problems. Um so we're gonna uh, we're purchasing software as well. Um quite a bit of software that's going to incorporate every piece of equipment uh the town owns, and that will be put in inventory for uh to make it uh quicker for us when we need to order things. Um it'll put everything on a perimeter maintenance schedule. We will be um incorporating uh work slips if people have a request or need in the building. Uh it'll be electronic work slips, so there's a lot going on there as well, we're trying to bring everything uh up to speed.
Most of that's being paid for through a grant. Um we did receive the second part of a grant application we submitted for the community um, the Commonwealth Capital Program. Um and when the Lieutenant Governor came here, so we received two pieces, a total of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh that's being used to purchase the school dude, um as well as some additional um uh IT technology that Steve Mahoney's using for some of the work that he's doing, as well as the merger expenses of trying to put this stuff together, so a lot of this, if you will, upfront or one-time costs, we're trying to utilize that grant as much as possible to pay for. And the school dude is really gonna be a fascinating piece of software, because it's really going to then work right into our capital plan, it will become the capital plan going forward. And again, whether that's vehicles or whether that's um, you know, um facilities or, you know, other type of infrastructure, it will all be listed in there, um which they're sending up a team as part of the process to come in and actually and actually, Dave, I'm gonna let you explain what they're gonna do.
So they're they're uh, they s- um subcontract out companies to come out, and they will inventory everything we have, so every piece of heating equipment in this building, um every town building, um will be heating equipment, exhaust equipment, uh anything of that nature, building infrastructure, um anything equipment-wise. So that'll, all that information will be taken down and then put into the database. Um and that'll help populate, they'll give us a life cycle, typical mechanical life cycle of an air conditioning system is twenty years. So they will have it, you know, every three months your air filter should be changed, every six months you should grease and oil and check belts. Um every twenty years, you expect us to roll around on your capital plan. So it's gonna help us forecast the town's uh, you know, expenses quite a ways out. So it's it's gonna streamline everything and and give us a much better handle on uh where we are long-term for planning.
On that process of inventorying all the equipment and so forth, are we barcoding that as we go to? Do you know?
Uh I I don't believe that's part of it, but it's something I can certainly talk with uh Stephen with and see if, you know, see if that's a uh financial possibility, sure. Um other than that, uh you know, right now, John, I don't, I'm not involved in John's uh daily operations, he manages that quite well. Um and if uh if he needs me, he knows uh, he knows where to find me now. But uh looking at, you know, long-term, him and I are talking more uh, you know, long-term uh merger there.
A couple of positions that we're currently working through right now, trying to get hired as a field and a turf specialist to oversee all of the athletic fields in the town, we we have advertised that position. Uh we've actually gone out and re-advertised for a second time, uh working and trying to get an individual to come in and oversee that. Uh plus, we're also in the process of um modifying the town custodian and school operation maintenance folks. So we're gonna have um, so before I say anything, this does not affect the custodians of the two schools. So that's the disclaimer, so now from there is that we're looking to, we're gonna have three positions, it's gonna be called a maintenance slash operator. One position's gonna be in the middle high school, one's gonna be in the elementary school, and one's gonna be overseeing all the town buildings. This was a position that was funded at a town meeting, uh the third position. So those will be three, if you will, equal positions that are responsible for the operations of the buildings. So they'll tie into the school dude and be in the hands-on person responsible for each one of those facilities. At the same time, our our goal is that they'll eventually be cross-trained, so that when one goes on vacation, the other person can, you know, deal with some triage issues for the other building, should something like that happen. Our buildings that we're building, the new fire station, new elementary school are significantly more sophisticated than what our current facilities are, so therefore we have to train these people, um more so than we've done in the past. In addition to that, then on the town side, we're gonna have maintenance slash custodians. That'll be responsible for the cleanliness of the existing town buildings, so we're working on that as well. Which is tied into the uh new union contract that Alan and I worked on, which is later on in the agenda uh for you guys to approve, working with John and his uh men and women to get that together. But I think we finally have come to a consensus with all the men and women to put it together, and everyone's willing to work towards this new endeavor to make it happen. And that's really, you know, it's come a long way with the collaboration, the cooperation of our trying to say, okay, how can we do this better? We're doing a good job now, but looking into the future, how could we do some type of modifications uh to allow us to 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 do more services with the 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 resources we have?
And like Michael stated, um you know, we want to, we'll still have dedicated people, especially for each school building, there's quite a bit going on there. Uh but we will cross-train, once the new elementary school, the training starts for that, which they're required to give us quite a few hours of hands-on training. Uh the building automation system over there is gonna be quite sophisticated, everything will be run off a PC, it'll uh from your heating, your air conditioning, your lighting, um pretty much everything in the building is gonna be automated. So we will train um all our maintenance people in that building, not just the one person dedicated to that building. Um when, you know, eventually we'll we'll work that townwide, so we uh, we always have backup.
We're also looking at new equipment uh to help the men and women. We're also looking at new equipment, uh, to help uh the men and women do, you know, be able to do their jobs a little bit more efficiently. For example, with the new elementary school being built, we're adding, you know, several new acres of, of fields. That'll be tied in there, plus all the fields at the school, which we're now gonna have the um, the wells up and running. So there'll be irrigation and they'll be growing year-round versus what happened two years ago when they died. So what we're looking to do is where the existing DPW equipment was only so wide. We're looking to move forward to the couple of vehicles that'll be three times the width of those. That can do large swaths of land, uh, more efficiently with one person versus, you know, one person going back and forth three times for, for one pass. So these are some of the things we're looking at, where our equipment too, to, to help improve and give the, the people the tools they need to do their jobs.
Comments, questions?
I think the operational idea was a great idea. By definition, I think it means we're ready for use, we're ready to go. So uh, you coming up with that title was uh very appropriate, I believe. Good job.
No, thank you for the update. It's nice to see that it's coming together.
Thank you both for what you do.
Thank you.
Scott, you got anything?
All right, thank you.
Any gentleman? I do have one question when it comes to the new roof and the new elementary school, hoping it's not, we don't have to worry about it. But we are in peak hurricane season. With those, what kind of problems with those?
Uh, we will make sure, you're talking about the possible storm that's coming in a week or so.
Hurricane season goes to the end of November, but it's turning real active.
Yeah, so they will, will make sure that they're conscientious of, um, right now, pretty much the, the only roof portion of the middle school. Um, that's not done is the middle school gymnasium. Um, that's just a two-day strip. They're waiting for um, some materials on that. Um, not sure if that will be done, um, but we obviously, we won't open that up if, if the storm is pending or any future storms. Elementary school, same thing. Uh, it's the same, actually the same general subcontractor that's doing the roof, same company. Um, and I've been in touch with both Forman uh pretty regularly.
So they'll be, they're, they're keeping aware of.
Yes.
Okay.
And on that, Alan, particularly with the elementary school, that's still their property.
Right.
At this point, we haven't taken ownership of that, so should something unforeseen happen, that's their responsibility. Their insurance program, they'll have to take care of that.
Okay. On that note, Dave, John, thank you so much for the update and you guys are doing a great job and looking forward to see how this whole thing develops. Same here.
Alan, do you wanna just briefly talk about the uh approval of the Department of Operation Maintenance Contract?
Oh, you can.
Okay. Um, so um, the chairman and I have been meeting with um, the um, the former DPW Union. Who's now gonna be called um, the Operation Maintenance uh Union. Um, to kind of incorporate this turf management position into the thing, to deal with the hierarchy of having. A maintenance slash operator or a maintenance slash custodian. As a result of that, we have come back with a um, a revised contract uh that we're all in agreement with. Um, that would incorporate the new folks coming into this. Uh, this does still have a bifurcated contract, nothing changes there. Uh, it does take us through uh FY twenty-one. Um, and in essence, what it includes is that in FY twenty-one, we actually have a one percent COLA for them in FY twenty-one. And then uh, for this year, um, starting in September, we also add a one percent COLA for them for this year. So in essence, it'll be for ten months, they'll get a one percent COLA on top of what they had before. And then a um, a signing bonus that we do with the contract, which is one-time money. Uh, with that, they're all in agreement with this and they've actually approved the contract, um, as you saw in front of your desk, um, earlier.
And uh, you know, like, like Michael said, it goes through FY twenty-one. So gives us another three, that's the rest of this year, plus two more on top of it, three more on top of it. So that's, that's always a good thing and we can get these contracts out and it's within the per, you know, projected budgets that we have. So I hope you'll.
Good job.
So we'll take a motion?
I'm moving to approve the new contract for the operations and maintenance employees.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, five zero.
Okay, next if I can get Chief Doofly to step up.
We've been waiting very patiently.
So in your packet, uh, you have, uh, and I'm, the chief's gonna go over this, but just real brief uh backgrounds. Um, uh, the governor uh put together a bill last week to file legislation to address. Some of the opioid and other um substances that aren't currently illegal on our, on our current laws right now. And this really brings some more tools for the police department to be able to do their job. Uh, so the people can't find loopholes in the law. So I'm gonna let the chief kind of explain what this is about. And uh, what we are asking is for the Board of Selectmen to vote to support this legislation. And for us to send a letter off to our state rep, our state senator, and also the governor on behalf of the town of Carver. Uh, given that um, you know, one of your priorities is dealing with the opioid epidemic, you know, in Carver on the South Shore. And this is just another tool to help the police do what they do. Chief.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, to start off, I'd like, I think I'm a little close to this. To start off tonight, I'd like to say that uh, as it's always been my approach, we have a, a three-front battle in the, in the drug problem. And the, the first front is obviously dealing with uh fighting people and arresting people that are dealing drugs. The second front is helping out people who are suffering from the addiction. And the third front is education of our young kids to not get into drugs. So I think we're working strongly on all three fronts and I think this piece of legislation that the governor has proposed. It will be very helpful in our fight against the people who are dealing drugs. Um, the proposed legislation changes are fully supported by the Mass Chiefs of Police Association. The ma- the major city chiefs of police and the Massachusetts District Attorneys Association. Uh, some of the key points that I'm gonna read from this and then I'll just speak to them. Are the legislation establishes enhanced penalties that directly target those who cause death by illegally selling drugs. Illegal drug distribution resulting in death would be punishable with a penalty of not less than five years and up to life in prison. A second key point is the law will also provide that any drug that is added to the various schedules of controlled substance by the federal government. Will automatically be considered a controlled substance under Mass law. Uh, then the law, the legislation contains uh a witness intimidation component. Which rewrites the witness invitation statute so that it once again covers retaliatory conduct. Such as somebody who's uh trying to rat out somebody who's selling drugs and they, they, that, that legislation was changed in two thousand and six. And it actually unfortunately went the wrong way. Um, the legislation also contains a set of enhanced penalties for solicitudes, so- solicitation to commit a felony. In Massachusetts right now, if you solicit somebody to commit murder, it's a misdemeanor and it's uh very difficult to charge somebody with it. It should be a felony like it is on the streets. So those are the four key points that come out of this. I, I've provided you with a packet with the actual legislation and a little summary of, of each change, but those are the four key ones. The first two uh points, I think, are very important to our fight uh with the current opioid pros- process. I believe holding those who sell these harmful substances accountable for death and destruction that they bring to us is the right thing to do. This proposed legislation would allow the police to further investigate and charge those who supply the substance that caused the overdose and resulting death. And while we will continue to push for education, prevention and treatments as a means to assist those suffering with this terrible addiction. I think that it's important and Governor Baker, a quote from Baker on it. While maintaining that focus, we should also ensure that those who cause our citizens the most harm by illegally selling drugs that kill people are held accountable for their actions. This, this um change in the law, from what I've read in some of the articles that I put in your packet. Uh, brings some concern from some people that we would be um, using it to incarcer- further incarcerate uh those addicted to drugs. Um, as I've always stated, uh, and is, is, is the approach for, for the um, at least the police departments in, in our county. Uh, there is no desire to incarcerate those addicted to drugs. It doesn't. Unless there's a need, you get to a point where sometimes there's a need to, to, to bring them to, for, to treatment. But there is no point in incarcerating somebody who's addicted to drugs and thinking it's gonna go away. However, there is a need to incarcerate those people who are making money and selling the drugs to, to uh, to the people who are suffering from the addiction. So this, this law will not change or will not move to uh incarcerate people who are addicted. It will move to incarcerate people who are selling these drugs and killing people. Um, the, the existing law is that if you call nine one one for help for somebody that has an overdose. Uh, you can't be charged with a crime and we can't charge either the person who experienced the overdose or the person that called um, in the emergency call. Which is a good thing. We wanna encourage people to call when they're having a medical issue or an issue that we can resolve medically. Um, however, it doesn't prevent us from charging the person who is, who sold the drugs. Um, this uh, passing this legis- legislation will enhance not only our ability to, but um. The, the district attorney's ability to prosecute people on those cases. So we've already begun um, work with the district attorney's office, with the state police to seize cell phones at overdoses. And to look for text messages, to talk to people, to try to find out where the drugs are coming from, so that we can make those type of cases. Even with this proposed legislation, there's still a very difficult case to make. But it's an effort we should be making because it's a, it's a key, key component of this problem that we're not um hitting as hard as we could be. You know, the people who are selling it should be held accountable, they should go to jail. And we've got room in the jails for them and, and we've got room in the uh, in the programs like we have down in the forest to help all the people who are addicted to it. So I don't want to think that a vote for this is a vote to put uh, or su- supporting this legislation would be a vote to put more people who are addicted in jail. It would be a vote to put more people who are selling the, the product in jail. The second point um that came from this is to uh mirror our drug classification system in Massachusetts with the federal government. Because one of the things that we're seeing is with the car fetinals and some of the other drugs, uh, they're, they're manufactured synthetically. And Massachusetts classification for drugs is very um well-defined. So that means if they define what heroin is and somebody makes a synthetic manufacturer of car fentanyl or, or fentanyl. That is a slight molecule law from that, we can't get a conviction for it, cuz you weren't dealing that, the drug that we have defined. You were dealing some other derivative of that, but it doesn't fit within our law. Um, so because we don't update our, our schedules as often as the federal government does. We're, we're finding, as many states are finding it, to just mirror that, what they're using. So as new um synthetic drugs come along, they get placed on the federal schedule and we automatically adopt them into our schedules as uh, controlled substances. Now, that, that is very effective with synthetic, synthetic things have been changed. It really doesn't affect the, the current um topic. Well, marijuana is legal, it's not legal, that's, that's a different story. We're talking about things that can be synthetically manufactured and changed to avo- avoid prosecution. So th- this bill uh proposed by the government, I think, will allow us to um better uh protect the citizens and better fight this. Uh, war on drugs that we're all, that we find ourselves in, especially on that front that I started with, off with is where we uh, we go after the people who are dealing it. So I would, I would suggest, I, I supported, the, the chief supported and I, I was suggesting if we could send a letter to our representatives saying they support it. I think it'd be a good thing to move forward on. Is that true, Michael?
The air motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to go ahead and support this lit- proposed legislation. We're sending a letter to our state rep, state senator and the governor. Any further discussion, comments? I think this is something that hopefully every mayor, city council, board of selectmen will support. In the strongest ways to get this through the legislature as soon as possible. Um, I agree with the chief, you know. It's important to be able to get the people that are making the money out of this, the people that are selling this poison. Not just youngsters, but to people in their twenties and thirties. I mean, it affects a wa- wide range of ages. So um, I hope we will all vote in the favor of supporting this and we'll take the vote now. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just a, just a quick point about how this comes home. Uh, last night we had uh two of our officers get dispatched to an Iraq operator, came up fifty-eight. All over the road, almost hit some cars and uh the officers caught up the car up, up north, um, near Landmark Center and um Dollar General. Uh, both the driver and the passenger were experiencing overdose and were passed out as the officer walked into the car. Both required numerous doses of Narcan to revive them and went to the hospital. So that's somebody, that's somebody driving on our roads overdosing. And, and not just potentially killing themselves, but you know, that could have been much, much worse. So everything we can do to, to affect this, we're gonna do. And like I said, we, we're, we're staying in a fight on all three fronts. We're not, we're focused, we're focused, we're trying to spread our focus on all three fronts because they are so important. Uh, and we'll continue to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update, chief.
Thank you.
Chief, while you're here, just uh real briefly, um, just wanna give them an update on um. So next week when we're having the consultant come in for the strategic plan?
Sure. Uh, tom- actually Thursday.
Thursday.
So um, this Thursday, we have two representatives coming from a company called MRI out of New Hampshire. To begin our um study, uh, study of the police department and uh in preparation for strategic plan. For the department moving forward for the next five, ten, twenty years. Um, that, that plan is gonna look at uh the department itself, its policy and procedures, the facility, uh, the equipment. Um, our stats, what we're doing now. And it will also um allow us to send out a survey to the public. A survey to the board of selectmen, a survey to our police officers to get uh an idea on how the town perceives what we're doing. Or everybody perceives what we're doing, what they think we should be doing and how they think we could be doing it better. Um, so that we can address um issues moving forward. The most immediate issue, the, the, the building of the new police station. Uh, the second to that would be the further development of the police department as far as staffing and ability for um investigation and such. So we're beginning that on, on Thursday, the first meeting with them. And hopefully we will move that forward at a rapid pace because we wanna, I wanna, like to be able to use that information as we push forward. Hopefully this fall into building, into setting up a building committee, uh, looking at uh plans for a new building.
I assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it really wouldn't make much sense to form a building committee until this has been completed. Cuz it would make no sense to me to go ahead and design a police station unless it's going to be able to meet all the needs of the department. Not just as it currently exists, but as we go forward and really may, build you, be able to build a station for you and your officers. That'll meet your needs ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road.
Yes, that is the plan for, that's why we're doing this plan, so that we will have, we'll be able to present to the town what's realistic for the next, for the future.
And I mean, what our goal is on top of that is, you know, this will be, if you will, the cornerstone of, of what the needs are of the, the department from a facility standpoint. And uh, hopefully be able to go forward with um our annual town meeting and, and bring some additional funding requests. To help accelerate this uh, this project. Uh, but certainly we don't want to go forward in a pointed committee until we have this done. And we wanna follow the successful process. We've just done with two other committees for the fire station. And the school building committee that, you know, have worked out very well. So um, that's what we have there. I think uh, and one other thing here, chief too, is I just wanna give an update um from a town that we won't name. Uh, that goes through a more aggressive um, uh cycling of police cruisers. Um, uh, we've just purchased uh two from their town, um, to supplement your admin support.
Yes, uh, we, we uh, obviously you see the fleet of police cars that we have for frontline patrol cars, the mock cars that we have out there. We're always uh, when we replace those, we've, we've gotten everything out of them we can and we're replacing with new cars. Because it's my belief that the, the frontline cars, the cars that can respond to your house in an emergency should be the best that we can get. Um, that being said, our admin fleet, which is my car, the, the second command's car and our detective's car. Um, don't necessarily have to be brand-new um cars. We've, we, I'd like to be able to cycle them eventually, used cars from the patrol fleet out, but right now we don't have that option. So we've looked for other opportunities to do that and we've been successful in purchasing um some used police cars. Uh, altered police cars that um, from a, from another town that came with uh some equipment in them. And, and we're able to do some painting and, and turn those into uh admin cars. Updating our admin fleet from uh, from some older cars, two thousand and eight cars to two thousand and fourteen. Um, all-wheel-drive uh SUVs for a much less, much less price than it would've cost to buy a, buy new cars. So we're trying to.
Yes, they've been all checked out by the town mechanic?
Yes, they have.
Got, got their approval?
Yes, we did.
And it was funded through um, through a little extra money uh from capital outlay?
That's correct.
With their, with their funds?
So it's just a way of moving forward and improving the admin fleet, the, the admin cars that we need without buying brand-new cars.
Uh, this is good thinking outside the box and, you know, doing, getting things, vehicles that you need, but also in a very cost-effective manner.
Yeah, the chief just showed me these this afternoon and, you know, three-year-old cars with sixty thousand miles on them, they look like they're brand-new. And for the, the, the dimes and the dollar we paid for them, um, certainly a good use of uh town assets. For second-line vehicles.
Tom, any question?
Good.
Can we let the poor chief go now?
All right.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, chief. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Scott, can I grab you up here? So just real briefly, just um, we've talked a little bit about the elementary school, um, you know, and that's, that's still on budget and, and ahead of schedule. Uh, we have no major issues with that. Um, and the only, you know, major change that we're gonna do is some of the technology things that I talked to you about tonight. Uh, from there, um, um, I'm gonna just let you kind of, the, the school committee has a um. Uh, from there, um, um, I'm gonna just let you kind of, the, the school committee has a um, a naming policy that was in your packet, uh, that they approved in two thousand. Um, and uh, our recommendation is that you just uh, allow the school committee to follow that process. And um, you know, if the board wants to take a vote on one of the three names that have been submitted, that'd be appropriate right now. Um, and then that'll be go forward to the next uh, school building committee. So if you wanna give an overview?
So the school committee policy in regards to naming new buildings, uh, is that the school committee would solicit from the public, from students, from parents, uh, suggestions for names for the new building. Uh, that the school committee would then vote, uh, maybe not necessarily one name, but a list of names to go forward to the school building committee. Uh, with the school building committee making the final decision on the name of the new school. Um, so we talked about that at our meeting in uh, August. And I've gone forward and I've put out a survey to the community, uh, and in the survey I use the, in essence, the current names of the school. Uh, according to the Department of Education, the name of the school is Carver Elementary School. Uh, the Carver Elementary School was com- when those two schools were combined, you remember they used to be separate schools. It was the Earl and Kay Washburn School, the Governor John Carver School. Earl and Kay Washburn was a K-two primary, Governor John Carver was a three-through-five elementary school. Those two buildings were merged under one principal, uh, under the previous superintendent. I don't remember the exact year because I wasn't directly involved in it at that time because I was at the middle high school, as you all know. Uh, but when the, when those buildings were combined, the new name according to the Department of Education was Carver Elementary School. Uh, with two buildings, the Earl and Kay Washburn Building and the Governor John Carver Building, all encompassing the Carver Elementary School. So in my mind, we already have three names over there. We have Carver Elementary School, we have the Governor John Carver School, and we have the Earl and Kay Washburn School, or Buildings. Uh, so those are the three names I put forward, but then I also wanted to give the community the, the ability to solicit other names. Uh, so in the survey, we did put other. Uh, and as of right now, there have been a couple of the names that have been floated forward, not with a huge round of support. But the other names that have come up are uh, the Ellis Atwood School, uh, the Benjamin Shertliff School, uh, and the Elizabeth Sorrell School. Uh, so those are the other three names that have kind of come forward. But all overwhelmingly, the support has been towards, and I didn't, I didn't bring the survey results with me, but it's a ra- it's around numbers. Don't hold me to these numbers. Uh, these, these are round numbers. It's around five hundred votes for Carver Elementary School. I'm sorry, around five hundred and fifty votes for Carver Elementary School, around four hundred votes for the Governor John Carver Elementary School, around fifty votes for Earl and Kay Washburn. The other write-in names were small number, two or three people voted for them. But in terms of Ellis Atwood, Benjamin Shertliff, I wanted to mention those names because people put them forward. I know they're both historic names within the town of Carver. I've actually done a little bit of research with the help of Bill Harriman. Actually, he's helped me out, uh, doing some research. And at the school committee meeting on, on next Monday, I'll talk about those two people's historical significance within the town uh, in terms of the naming process. Uh, and then um, you know, then we'll make, the school committee will make a recommendation for a couple of those names to go forward to uh, the school building committee for a file name. And also in my, in my point of view right now, I think it's a, it's obviously the, this community for, support for the Governor John Carver Elementary School because that's kind of the historic name, that's who the town is named after, uh, and Carver Elementary School. Uh, so that's kind of where we stand on the, on the naming process at this time. And then the school committee will take a vote on Monday evening to put a few names forward to the school building committee. School building committee is uh, Thursday, September twenty-eighth. And at that time, that will be on the agenda to vote a name of the school from the school building committee. Are there any questions about the-
I know if anybody's been, what, you know, delves into social media, there have been some passionate discussions um, on that. Um, you know, and I'm kind of surprised nobody, you can tell, I, I behave myself. I was gonna put in Henry Miller Shaw, but one of the ori- the original principal, author when I was in school there. But um, I guess to take a motion for names that we would recommend?
Can I just, um, just, just one other comment on this is that, um, you know, I think Scott, you and I have talked about this a lot, brings up a really good point is, you know, we have two facilities in town. We have a middle high school and we have an elementary school. We're not a town that has multiple buildings around town, you know, where you would then get into individual namings. Uh, having said all that, is there will be opportunities in the future to, to look at potentially naming a field or naming, you know, a certain part of a building after somebody, if it's appropriate. Uh, but right now, we're just trying to classify, you know, just the main name of the building, which will go on to the sign out front, which we actually need to move forward with this month, um, so that we can keep that element under, under schedule as well.
Mr. Clark?
Uh, yeah, I uh, you know, it's the Carver Middle High School and I, I sort of lean towards just calling it the Carver Elementary School. You know, I mean, the Governor John Carver Elementary School sort of becomes a mouthful, I think. It's-
Would you like to put that in the form of a-
I'll make a motion that uh, the board of selectmen support the naming of the school as the Carver Elementary School.
Do I hear a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, we have a first, uh, motion, a second, discussion. Ms. Marone?
I'd really like to table this because quite frankly, I'd like to hear more about the, the different names and do a little bit more thinking about this. I didn't know we were gonna be putting this up to a vote tonight.
We don't have, this is only a recommendation. We don't, we don't have any real-
Only problem with that?
No, I understand that. It's a school committee.
Is that it's gonna be going before the school committee next Monday?
The school bill will agree on the twenty-
And then the school, and we don't meet again until well into October. So we can either not make a recommendation, uh, to let the school committee know what our preference is or, or we can go ahead with motion.
Oh, we haven't a discussion?
Yeah, we're still in discussion. Um, Sarah?
I, you know, I kind of concur with Helen here and I, I feel like it should be up to the school and s- school committee or whoever.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, this is just our opinion.
I understand. So Helen's expressed hers. And I understand only fifty people went for Earl and Kay Washburn, but if they only knew what he really did for this town.
No lobbying.
I'm just saying, a lot of people don't know how he actually got that school built. And so that's just one of those little, you know, not very well-known facts that if they knew that, they'd name it after him.
Well, I, I knew that. Excuse me, Mr. Do- Mr. Milonowski.
Um, excuse me, through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You just said, "Don't lobby that," but yet you want us to make a decision? And Sarah is providing knowledge of the historical significant of this man.
Thank you, Helen.
So how can you say you're not lobbying by saying that you want us to make a decision tonight on the first go-around? Just give it to-
I could lobby for her to be named Allen I. Dunn Elementary School.
There you go.
Mr. Robertson?
Well, I think it should stay the Governor John Carver School. That is my personal opinion. And the reason for that is, it started out as the Governor Carver, K-through-eight. And so it added on an elementary school as a wing. So in my opinion, that would be my vote, which is what I put on the, on the survey.
That's a good, that's a good argument.
Okay, we currently have, Mr. Clark?
Well, just uh, I, you know, I've been around a long time too and I worked with Irwin on the school committee and so forth. Uh, and I recognize everything that Irwin did, but there are other citizens that have also been extremely important. And uh, I just like the simplicity of Carver Middle High School, Carver Elementary School. I, I, people are just gonna call it the elementary school anyway. The Governor John is gonna get lost and-
Mr. Clark, could I make a recommendation? Would you be willing to amend your motion to have two names that we could present to the school committee that we'd be, you know, satisfied with?
No, I would not.
Okay.
I, I would be satisfied with the vote if Mr. Clark would just work with the rest of the group and say, "Just add the Governor John Carver Elementary School," and then it would be done with this?
But then I, but I disagree with that.
All right, we're gonna take a vote on the first motion?
It's all you do.
Who's in favor of recommending to the school committee of the name of Carver Elementary School? Please answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Uh, that motion fails one-four. Can I, may I have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we suggest that calling, the name of the school be Governor John Carver School.
And we have a first and a second on that, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm afraid to vote because he just-
Would you, do you wanna change, do you wanna change seat spot, you know, just for the vote?
Yeah, I think we need to.
All right, no, seeing, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of recommending to the school committee that the name of the new elementary school be the Governor John Carver Elementary School, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes four-one.
Democracy.
Didn't it work well?
Worked.
Someday each of you will come to me and ask me for a favor.
My sen- my, my sense is both those names will go forward to the school billing committee and they'll be making a decision.
And they'll, they'll go ahead and hammer it out.
You're all entitled to the wrong opinion. It's not, it's, that's, this is America.
We're still being taped and broadcasting live, sir.
It's fine. I'm expressing my feelings.
So we can go ahead and talk about how you're wrong.
Well, you could attempt to.
And just while I have Scott up here, um, he's, he's also working with me and uh, the committee that's overseeing the sports complex at the middle high school. Uh, we have released an RFP for that, uh, to bring in a landscape architect designer uh, for that. So that is out on the street. And uh, once uh, the results of that come in, then the committee will be meeting um, in later September or October to go through that list and try to uh, pick a, pick a firm to move forward. And with that, they're looking at both artificial turf and natural grass.
And we're looking to have something to go before town meeting to have the construction be in FY eighteen?
Um, we're looking to-
Or FY nineteen?
Uh, be FY nineteen. That's an aggressive schedule we're working on, yes.
I realize that, but there's nothing wrong with aggressive sometimes.
Any questions while I got Scott here?
Anybody have a question about the new field? I mean, it's kind of an update.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ray.
Have a great evening.
Good luck with the name.
Thank you.
No pressure.
Hopefully they get it right.
Well, I do believe that Mr. Milonowski and Mr. and Superintendent Neef are both on the elementary school building committee. So they will have a voice in selecting the name. No pressure, guys.
Who do you like better?
Moving on.
See, that's unfair.
Uh, what else we have? Uh, we have the council on aging, uh, just um, again, working with uh, three members of the board of directors and just reviewing the different needs and wants um, for a, a new facility as well as getting input from the cook down there on what additional equipment they'll need in a new facility or an addition built on a facility. So that is working, uh, moving forward. Um, we are working uh, just with some preliminary concept plans, just to get some space needs down. And um, you know, I would hope actually maybe even by our October seventeenth uh, meeting, we may actually have uh, those members come in and do a quick presentation to the board. Uh, that's also aggressive, but we might be in time for that. So again, that's being worked on as, as we speak. Um, let's see, uh, moving on, uh, we have uh, the budget planning uh, documents um, that were in your packet. Um, here's just an extra set if you wanna see what those are. Um, on one side, it shows um, the budget process for all town operating budgets and then the other side is for capital projects valued over ten thousand dollars. Um, now this is really working with all the different committees through the four steps. Um, uh, so these are the dates we're working on. So uh, by October seventeenth, uh, we will be presenting um, what we're gonna have for the uh, recommended budget forecast, a ten-year budget forecast. Uh, Mr. Scott Neef and myself, uh, Meg Lemay and Brad Brothers uh, will be having several meetings before then just to finalize what that forecast is gonna be, to show you what the future revenue is gonna be for next year, which then all the budgets will be built off of. Um, from there, we then move forward with um, the departments preparing their capital budget items um, uh, that are submitted into a, a combined plan plus their, their overall budgets. Uh, we hope to have most of that completed by uh, December fifth. Um, the school, um, hopefully will have its capital done then, but the operation budget for the school is gonna be another month after that, just by the time they go through their process and their hearings. So their operation budget will be a month or so later than what these dates are again. Just wanna point that out. Uh, from there, uh, then we get into meeting with the FINCOM and the capital outlay in steps three on both sides. Um, so that uh, those groups would then have their budget hearings uh, completed by February sixth uh, with a recommendation to the board of selectmen by February sixth, and then that'll leave the selectmen with a month uh, to March sixth to review where everything's been recommended to you guys. And March sixth then gives us the ability of meeting the thirty days prior to town meeting to have finalized budget items with a tentative date of this year's annual town meeting being uh, Tuesday, April tenth, which I think last year was April eleventh, just the way the dates work. Uh, but that's the week before the spring vac- uh, break vacation.
Are we gonna have the cutoff or any art- submitted articles will also be that March sixth?
No, actually those, uh, we would need those a lot sooner. Um, so what I'm gonna suggest is that our next meeting on August seventeenth, we talk about that.
August seventeenth?
I'm sorry, October seventeenth, with a, a tentative date of having all the articles due by December fifth. So I give people a month and a half to put those together.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, last year we did a good job having budgets done a month ahead of time, but we had articles still floating around that we were voting on at the last minute. I would really ask that we have a hard and fast deadline on article submission and we get the language worked out so that when we hit March sixth, everything's done. We're not doing any last-minute sessions to go through things. I understand there's always the possibilities from tweaking, but I really, you know, I, what we, what we, the obligation that we committed to was to have everything done by March sixth. So if that means moving up the dates uh, in order to have town council be able to have time to review things, then that's what we need to do. Understanding that you never know what curves were gonna be thrown, but I think we need to really make a hard effort to try to have everything done by March sixth.
And if I understand the town administrator right, that we're gonna, that'll be our topic of discussion at our October meeting.
Yeah, and our meeting, I may even come back with a revised timetable for November to have all of the other articles in, just to make sure that we get that done. But um, hearing that that's the will of the selectmen, assuming that's what everybody wants, then we'll, we'll make it happen.
Much sooner as opposed to later.